Andrew Franklin.
Here.
Carla Bennington Cross.
Here.
Ben, what? Ben, what? Ben, can you hear me?
Recording.
Ben, are you able to hear?
Can you hear us, Ben? That's not here, so. I will text him. I mean, I know you're here, but. Blink twice if you're here. Okay, that's the last thing.
Oh, were you? I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was. Call Ben then.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, my standard of legislation.
I salute you to the play of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to item one, agenda approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, voice vote aye.
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 Any objections? The agenda is approved, so we will move on to public comments. This, we get a list out, Taylor, or no? This would be a time that visitors would speak on any non-agenda item at this time. Note that state law and board policy may limit our response. Does anybody here wish to engage? Bert? Is this a Kurt?
Hi.
Is this an agenda item or a non-agenda item?
No, I'm no certain to sign it.
Oh, thank you. Well, we're glad you're here, Bert. Um, okay. We will move on then to board member reports, item three A. The first item up is a district celebration.
So I want to thank all the students that are here tonight, and I don't know, oh, there she is. Where Ms. Cook went. So not too long ago, Karn emailed and said, hey, we noticed that there's still time for us to have some artists at the state convention downtown. And so we reached out to Ms. Cook, and it was a very short timeline, but she worked with the students and she selected some artwork, and she got it all packaged up and sent down, and it was on display at the convention, which is statewide. So administrators and school board members from across the state got to see it. So I just wanted to thank you for your work in getting them prepared and let you introduce the students because we're really here to honor them and thank them for their work tonight.
Okay, um, I'd like to introduce, where would you like me to go?
Anywhere.
I'd like to introduce James Hinchi. James, this is James's work, so I'm gonna have him pull it up. James spent a lot of time working on his design, which we were studying, how to do repetitious design and color. And that's what we were doing with all of the projects, but James, I thought, was very unusual and very different and also just really, like a really dedicated piece of work. So I think he's just done a fabulous job, so I wanted to introduce James to you. And our next student.
Thank you.
Anna, um, also worked on this project as well, and hers, you can see, is very different. So Anna, you're gonna go break in. You're there, Sophie.
There you go.
And all of these, all of our students, yep, you're good. So the assignment was the same, but you can see how different the designs the students created came out. Each one very individualized. And then it's our last student who's not here tonight is Peyton from Phil Patrick, but I'll hold hers up for you as well. If you can see.
Nice.
Yep, sorry.
Oh, I hate you, yeah. Thank you so much for responding so quickly.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to let you know that I'm so proud of these four students. They've put so much time, so much energy. Just were really focused on doing a really excellent, well-crafted. Personally, I just think that their work is so well thought out and just so creative with their, their interpretation of the assignment. And I think that you're so honored to be selected to go to Wasby to, that Ms. Weiss asked us if we would participate. And I think the thing that's the most important is that we're celebrating our students and their creativity. And it's just exciting to have that opportunity, and I want to say thank you to the board and to Ms. Weiss for inviting us and allowing our students to have work from there. It was really, really impressive and really important, and it just, I'm just so proud of the kids. They worked so hard, so thank you so much.
Thank you. It was really fun seeing their work, too, because we were at the convention, so I felt like a proud school board, you know, as far as a parent, maybe, or it was cool. So thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight to the students. I know you have long days and lots of homework, probably, but I appreciate seeing your faces, your art.
They're gonna head out soon because they have to get home to get all their work.
We're not the most exciting thing.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing them.
Hey. We are moving on to item three B, which is a Black History Month resolution. Um, I'm happy to propose this resolution again for the board to recognize February as Black History Month 2024. Um, I've already seen a lot of awesome things happening in our schools around us. And my hope is that, our plan is that at our school board meeting, we're going to be able to bring some, some people in to talk about what we've been doing this month, but everybody knows that we have an absolutely amazing Black History Month program on Thursday, February 29th at 6:00 PM. Um, so nobody should miss that. Um, but yeah, I just, resolution speaks for itself.
Did you write?
It is, it is not, I'm sorry. I think the resolution speaks for itself, and I know that in our district, Black History Month is just one month in which we honor the contributions of Black Americans and African Americans, but I still think it's important to formally recognize it, say it. So that's my introduction. Would anybody like to?
I would be honored to make a motion to adopt the resolution in recognition of Black History Month 2024.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt the resolution in recognition of Black History Month 2024. Somebody is, I'm so sorry. Oh, somebody, oh, sure.
Is the protocol that they chat?
Oh, sure. We just weren't sure.
The board recognizes Angela McGuire. Angela, are you able to type your comment into a chat?
Not a webinar.
Hand was raised. Let me see if I can get to. I'm wondering if they not. Her hand is not raised anymore. All right, should we continue?
Technical difficulties tonight. I'll work out the kinks. Uh. So there's a motion and a second. Yeah. All in favor to approve the resolution, voice vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we are moving on to our budget update, budget discussion. Todd?
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. I didn't see Gus sign yet, but thanks for joining us.
Well, I'll tell you where I'm at. We, we met with the administration on Monday and kind of went through what the situation is and what we're working on. Um, I have been kind of working on 2223 audit, but I think, you know, I'm kind of steering away at this point. Have been working with Baird on cash flow for the remainder of this year into next fall. And so I, I would say probably tomorrow, um, Friday at the latest. I would like to work with the administration and Baird on creating a strategic plan going forward to make sure that, you know, cash flow is not going to be a problem as we get into, you know, June, July, August, and so on. I, I know that, you know, we're good. We, we've done a partial cash flow. We're good through May, but we need more information. We continue to work on that as we look towards June through August. So that's our situation. Been working with uh, some, some areas such as getting reports out with Teresa. Um, I know things like 1099s are due and those, while they're urgent, probably not as urgent as some of the other areas. So between Gus and I, you know, I'm hoping that we'll be able to rebuild the 2324 budget so that we know kind of where things are going to be at over the next few months. So looking at, you know, just, just getting some of those numbers in place, but also looking at some strategy going forward in terms of, you know, maximizing, let's, let's get out there and apply for all the grants that we are entitled to, such as ESER, the Title Funds and so on, and then also what expenditures can we hang on to until we know exactly where we're going to be over the next few months?
Okay, thank you, Todd. Any board members have questions for Todd?
Todd, this is Karen. Do you have an anticipated point where you'd be able to update us more so on that post-May status?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not picking up very well. Let me turn up my volume a little bit. If you could repeat that, that would be great.
I'm wondering if you have an idea of the timeline, when you'd be able to update us on that post-May status?
I, I would like to have a lot of stuff done and in place by the end of February. Now, that's really pushing it, but I think that's, you know, the sooner the better. Um, some of the, some of the strategies that we're going to use, we're going to have to start working on ASAP, and I don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we're, we're, we hurt ourselves because we're not jumping on top of these things right away. So end of February, I hope to get a lot more done, and I think Gus is in the same, same spot.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have to say Andy Franklin. I think that the question that I want to ask is, we've been very deliberate in our approach so far to getting you here, to getting Gus in, and to going through things in an in-depth manner. My question for you is, in addition to those steps that we have been taking, that we have been taking so far, that we've already taken, are there any steps right now that we should be contemplating at this moment that we've not taken, that maybe we aren't aware of, that you've uncovered the last couple of weeks?
Well, I think number one is, any discretionary expenditure should be held right now. Uh, anything that's not urgent, anything that's not, um, you know, going to impact things like salaries, benefits, programming, and so on should, should be held right now. That doesn't mean it won't be spent, but at least at this point, that would help to know, or help us, you know, know that there won't be any cash flow impacts prior to, let's say, June, which is, which is a target date. But I, again, working, you know, working with Baird, we're looking at a couple of different strategies to make sure that, you know, there's, there's not going to be a cash flow issue as we get into June, July, and August. That's probably our top. Uh, to me, that would be the top priority along with trying to literally redo the budget. Um, and that almost had, that may have to be done from scratch almost. The only good point is you've had a lot of expenditures this year, so we know um, what, you know, we know what the budget is going to look like over the last, you know, six, seven months. And then it's just forecasting the, like, the final four or five months.
Thank you.
Hi, Todd, it's Carla here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. You're redoing the budget because you weren't left clear documentation of what the budget was?
Well, I think there was, but I just don't know how, how accurate it was. I mean, um, I, I, I have not seen a lot of support documentation for the numbers. Um, and, and things like salary and benefits, I think, have to be redone. And then Gus is preparing what, what I call a position control, which uh, very accurately shows what all salary costs are going to be and what all benefit costs are going to be, and um, that's going to take a little bit of time, but, but to me, that's a, that's a huge piece of this. You know, and we need to do this because we need to know what, what our year-end fund balance is going to look like and, you know, what we're going to need to do going into 2024, 25. I, I, I think to not, I think to, to rely on the numbers that you have right now would be a mistake.
Yeah, okay, I, yeah, I agree. Um, then, um, on the discretionary spending, I, I assume you talked with administrators on Monday about holding discretionary spending, so they kind of have their marching orders.
That is correct. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll reiterate that again tomorrow. I'll, I'll email again tomorrow. Um, I did not have the, the most recent cash flow information until early this afternoon. Um, and, and I'll again reiterate what those numbers are looking like suggests we really need to, to hold on those expenditures. There are a couple of small ones, which, you know, those might be okay. It's something that's coming up. Um, it's, it's somewhat urgent, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll put out the message, and then the administration can decide. You know, i- if this thing really is a, a non-discretionary, urgent expenditure, then, then I guess, you know, it'll have to be made. If you're, if you've got a few thousand here and a few thousand there, that's not going to, that's not going to make the kind of difference that, that we're getting, need to be looking at over the next couple of months.
And it, it sounds like, you know, I'm starting to think ahead to next year's budget, but it sounds like we're, we're really not in a point yet where you can start, um, thinking about what next year's budget is going to look like, right? Until you understand this year's budget better.
Correct, correct. You know, I, I think one of the things that I think has happened, I don't think, I know has happened, is that I think you were, we were told you have enough funding to provide some pretty significant salary increases. But with those salary increases, it increases things like FICA and, and Wisconsin retirement system as well as other areas, and, um, it's, it's, you know, there's kind of a domino effect when you start uh, giving out those, you know, large increases. Um, and I, I, I don't think you had the, the funds, really had the funds available to do that.
All right, thanks, Todd. I have other thoughts, but I don't know, and I need to.
For Todd and.
Yeah.
We have Gus.
Yeah, Gus on the phone. For some reason, he wasn't unable to log in, but, um, I can put you on speaker and by my microphone, Gus, so we can see if that'll work.
Hi, Gus.
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me. I, I apologize. I, I could, I could see everyone and I could hear everyone. I just, I had no control about talking in video or anything like that on my, on my, so I apologize for that. I tried my, my Sundale computer, I tried my personal computer, I tried my phone, and I kept doing the same thing on all three, so.
No worries, guys.
Yeah, all I would say is, um, right now, yes, Todd and I met with the administrative staff Tuesday, or Monday. I will be back next Tuesday. I, I intend to have meetings with them. As Todd told me, what, what this portion was, I had discussion about where we were and how we were going to start moving forward. If we go forward on budgeting. 24, 25 school year, if not. They have questions, things like that. Forward on that. I can, I intend to start working on, calculate an estimated revenue control and where we could be. Revenue. Or if you have some idea of where we could be on revenue, so we'll have an idea of budgeting, so we can work on budgeting even while Todd is on 2023. We'll have some idea of where we started on that. Also, but with, with staff grants, we have getting to work on the title, grants, start getting some claims in for this year. We have Medicaid, we're up to be, where we need to be with Medicaid claiming uh, the 23, 24 school year. And we come to conclusion that there's an inclusion that is, it is obvious we will not be able to. Will be able to pay for one student for high cost, it'll be, there will be more, but we'll be able to do that because a year ago, we got that, both back against, around 2023, and then 2023, we could see it was that we had used federal dollars paying tuition for districts inside district. That's it. It's time, and it's not. That occurs in other districts also, yeah, it's not the scope of everything, it's not a kind of something that could be way down or where now, you know, that if we go forward, if we plan this year, things like that, that we're gonna do things differently, so that next year, we will be able to claim be able to claim students for after 23, 24 school year. In 24, 25 for high cost, so that we'll go forward and continue to have that revenue source also in the future, so. Maybe some have a, you know, continuing to go forward on things, if we go forward on 23, 24, that are not attention upon what Todd has to finish up for 22, 23. I mean, we'll be forward on those types of things, being sure that we're just going to be possible, cannot those, forward there, so we'll propose that something like that.
Anybody have questions for Gus? Ben, you doing all right? You have any questions? Ben, do you have any questions?
Well, I, uh, no, I, I just missed that last part about, but, the claims, but then I remember we, uh, the information about the claims issue. I mean, do we, I mean, if we did the claim correctly, about how much money would that save us?
Oh, I think.
Well, your claims, the, the claims have been done. Uh, we, we, uh, met virtually with DPI, and uh, the claims for 22, 23 are actually in pretty good shape. Um, they were done. The only difference was there was, um, a $16,000 carryover in one of the title funds, um, coming into this year, but in terms of this year, we still have, we have like that 740 some thousand in ESER funds that we need to apply for ASAP along with some of the other, uh, title and special ed funding. So that, that again takes on some urgency over the next week or two. But the, the claims actually were, were, were in pretty good shape for, for 2023.
No, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Gus, for that. I know that Carla, no, like our general sort of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, I mean, I think, um, yeah, do you want to, I know Carla has some thoughts she wants to share.
Yeah, so, um, Todd and Gus, first I want to say thank you again, and again, and again, for jumping in and just, uh, really leading this process through and getting people involved. Um, I've been thinking from a board perspective. I've been doing some reading. I read a book about budgeting in public schools. I've read some articles, you know, just trying to wrap my head around this and the realistic probability um, that we have to consider tightening belts and reining in the budget in some way. I don't know what that would look like. But I've been thinking about what an appropriate role is for the school board because I would like to see systems set up so we're, we have well-defined roles and we're not enmeshing ourselves in the weeds, but we're defining the weed patch and having an appropriate role for our board. So I've been thinking about, um, and this is last minute because we're in crisis and we don't seem to have, um, we have fairly limited policies around board role and budgeting. And I want us to think about putting plans in place for increased stakeholder participation, particularly for this year where people are really worried. And so, Todd, I'm really, I'm glad that you're meeting with, you and Gus are meeting with administrators, and I'd like to see us somehow, I, I have ideas, I don't know if this board wants to talk about them today, engaging community, engaging teachers, engaging anyone who wants to participate in, um, budget discussions in one role or another. And I think we ought to be reviewing our policies on what budget planning looks like. And I think as a board, we do have the power to sort of express our commitment to working collaboratively with our community and honoring the work of our district staff around budget. We have the power to state guiding principles for our district with a focus on mission and vision and our commitment to ensuring that adjustments to budget have a minimal impact on classrooms and students. I think we have the power to make that statement as a board and to keep people focused on that goal. And, you know, my goal is to avoid what we went through in October, when we had information dumped on us without enough time to process massive change in the budget that we were presented in June. So I just want to open that door to that conversation. Um, I'd like to see us have transparency. I'd like to see us have a clean communication plan. It's a big lift. Um, and I don't want to see all that work dumped on Gus and Todd, who have come into us as experts, but who haven't been a part of our community for long. And I don't want to see them either scapegoated if things are hard or left to make decisions without our community input. So I think we can do it. Todd, Gus, I'd love to hear if you have thoughts about this, but, you know, I, I don't want us to stick our fingers in it, but I think this board can help support you in this work, and I think a big part of that is getting people engaged now, so that when we get to the end of the road, we're all on the same page and not bickering at the 11th hour.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I was superintendent for 12 years and, and, um, so being, being the scapegoat is nothing new. Um, but I don't think it has to be there. I mean, the situation is, um, the, the, the issue that created this is, is basically no longer, um, in the picture at this point. And so what we're doing, what Gus and I are doing, um, are, 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 you know, trying to do the good work of making sure that, um, there's not going to be any issues over the remainder of this year and then for years to come in terms of, you know, running a, running a good school district. So that's, that's kind of the approach, and, you know, we're just going to have to do whatever we can do. Um, I know right now you're, you're posted for a new business manager, and I, I, I think another thing Gus and I can help with is hopefully help you install someone who, um, has the experience, who, who has the ability to work through this kind of challenge, um, to make things, to make things better. But I think you're right, Carla, you're going to have to, it's going to have to be a whole community event because, uh, things are going to have to change. There's going to maybe be cuts to programming, staffing. Um, uh, e- even though your, your enrollments tend to be relatively flat, which, which I'll say is, is good news for you. But those types of things, you know, we'll have, you have to look at some stopgap measures and hopefully a lot of the, the things that are maybe the most, um, I don't know, if I want to say most concerning to people. I don't know, if I want to say most concerning to people might be short-term um and then, and then we're able to move on.
Gus?
Um, you know, and I, what I failed to mention was, the one thing I asked administrators on Tuesday was. Is, and they're gonna have it ready for me, or on Monday, I'm sorry, and they're gonna have it ready for me Tuesday when I come back, is staffing in the district. So we, because we gotta begin looking at that, and obviously that's gonna be a board, board's gonna be heavily involved with that because. If we run into this, if we happen to run into a situation that is going exactly where we are at this point, so I can't tell you one way or the other, but if we have to do anything for staffing. Uh, that's a, that's a board function. Uh, the board has, Michael say on that, uh, so definitely would be involved is that portion. My intention is as we go forward. Uh. That you will be. Will be kept up, up speed on what, what I, when I work with administrative, uh, things like that, obviously then you can. I will give that stuff to you in advance, like you, you need to discuss anything. Before we begin actual, or cut certain parts of the budget, you uh. You will be able to comment and make decisions, things like that. Um, I understand. Uh, a situation that, that has occurred and you will know more probably than you even want to. Uh, about budget, it will definitely, will definitely be keeping transparency and you can then decide how we're going forward. Be uh, be, be, uh, however you should uh forward, I mean, it be, it will be out there. Uh. The uh, you know, in regards to. Because that. So, yeah. It's, it's gonna be out there and it's gonna, it's gonna have, you can see. Exactly what we're, what we're doing, because I think it's, it's slightly important, and I only, and I only know that only because the fact that as a uh. Superintendent. I was actually, when I was. Before I retired. Uh, I was in districts that had declining involvement, so we were, we. Budgets were screwed me all the time. Doesn't those disagree? We're looking to cut every year and. So getting community input, getting all that sort of stuff, I'm used to. That's just been a, a part of my life, so that's not something new. That, that. I think that's already been a part of the process, that's well.
Um, thank you, Gus. That's, that's really good to hear. I guess I have a question then for, for Gus or Todd, just around like timeline, like at what point does the board? Should we start talking about like defining our role, the process, these principles, like, like, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, you'll, you'll be getting some of that, you'll be getting some of that relatively soon with the, with the strategy that we put in place, because there will, will, there will be. Uh, some, some items that need board approval going forward, so um, you'll, you'll kind of see what that looks like relatively soon.
It, and, and I would tell you that, yeah, you may, you may come up with some guidelines, things like that. The other thing is, uh. This proceeds like I would hope it would, I'm giving twenty-four, twenty-five budget and everything is out there, you may look and say, okay. Uh, well, you may come up with things like that, but I hope would be is that once this process is completed. Initial budget, you know, ready to you, early summer and stuff like that, that you might take some time and, and look back and maybe would say, okay. What did we like about what, what transpired, what did we not like, what we, we'd like to change, what do we want to establish in policy? What do we just want to establish as, as required information to the board, you may. If you put through this process, you may come up with ideas of things that, that you. How you want to proceed. Like I said, I'm not discouraging you from coming up with ideas now, but I'm also saying that when you're done. You may want to review or be thinking, because you will have gone through some type of process. And you can evaluate what part you like, what part you like.
That is great advice, Gus. And I think we could probably work as fast as we choose if we're going to. Make sort of a broad statement, guiding principles, right? It's just a question of our energy and calendars.
Yeah. Anybody else? Discussion, comments, questions?
Uh, this is Karen. I would just add my deep appreciation for your expertise, both of you. I mean, to have you both with a history and a knowledge that's so extensive, it really is a benefit to our district. We're really appreciative of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and just to give a heads up right now, I would tell the board that any staffing things that come up. We're gonna have to start having those discussions. I know what my timeline is, I gotta get stuff to you. Up the, in the middle of March, or so soon, so I have discussions, because we have to make decisions. If by chance there's going to be some. We have to review some type of staff reduction, at least with the teaching staff, we have to do that by, by April fifteenth.
Right, there's some built-in timelines, of course.
Yeah, there's, it's built-in time, just, but you saw as, as you started thinking about what's coming down the. What may be coming at you, I can tell you right now that that's, and that's gonna be probably the first thing that you're gonna have to deal with. And be informed about where we are with staffing.
Yeah, Andy?
I just want to ask one question and it's been kind of in the background, because there are other things that are more important, but I am curious. Obviously, there's a potential burden. So, I, oh, well, it's not liability. I mean, we, we have financial issues, obviously, that uh can cost the district uh money potentially. Um, I'm wondering beyond that, is there is in any of your view, um, either Todd or. Or Gus, a- any indication uh of any other potential liability, you know, regulatory, civil, what have you? Um, I, 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 I wouldn't know that there would be any, but um, I guess I, I want to ask that question is generally, generally, if I can.
I would say as I dig through stuff, I mean, it's not, it's not out of the question that there might be some things here, and I think it's. I, I, I don't think we should just, just dismiss that uh there might be more to this, and as we dig through and we see what's. What's in there, um, you know, we, we might, we might be having a different kind of conversation.
But no, but nothing at this point.
I, n- n- no, um, and I'll, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll hold my adjectives for now as to what. Um, I, I'd see, I don't want to get myself in trouble, but uh, it's, yeah, I mean, it's. Very, very, very unusual. So I'm not gonna count, I'm not gonna count anything out as to uh, you know, some of those issues that you brought up.
We're still missing nine of them. Well, okay, that's a lot to process, a lot to think about. I think of. Yeah. Sorry. I also want to say thank you. I know that um. Uh, the whole admin team, I'm glad. Thank you, Todd and Gus, for, for bringing them in, because I know that. They are, you are picking up a lot of the, the parts that um were done by our business manager. I know you guys are all busting. Your behinds um to, to help out and step up and are taking on that role, so. Just know that we see you. We really appreciate everybody. This is. I've been very appreciative of our amazing board and how collaborative and cohesive we feel. I've been really. Appreciative of the community's support, um, and I just, you know, I'm just grateful that this is, this is our team, so. Um, so that's it, so. Anything else?
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Jenica. I see you there.
And Anna.
And Anna, and people who aren't here, but it's nice that we're not fighting. Seriously, I mean, in some communities, we would be, and we're not gathering around, so.
Okay, thanks, Gus. I'm gonna head out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
Okay, uh, we are going to move on to item five A. Policy Employee Handbook. This is really uh just a discussion and a placeholder, I would say, because we actually did as um. You guys will remember, we had uh, we approved the handbook, we approved it with the caveat that we would have our legal team review it. They did in fact review it. They had made some edits, some redlined edits, some suggestions. Um, Allison had reached out to Tracy, our payroll and benefits, because I think she had initially expressed some. Concerns about what, what uh some changes to the handbook might mean. So she has reviewed. Part of the handbook. She has also offered us some of her feedback, so both of those things have been shared with the board. Um, what I'd like to do is revisit this um. At a regular board meeting, so just, that's just basically giving you guys time to, to look at that, ask any questions you have. I don't know if you wanted Tracy to review the entire handbook.
She probably wouldn't mind if she has a little bit more time.
Sure. So, um, yeah, so are there any questions, any discussion? Okay, and we are gonna move on to future agenda topics and or meeting dates.
You know, we wanted to. I know we wanted to talk about bringing Perry and Bear together, so I know we wanted to.
Yes.
Ooh.
Ooh. Okay, sorry. So there, so there were just, so we've had. Um, uh, Allison and I have had discussions about surveys. Uh, we have a staff and a student survey uh that would be going out. The sound, it sounds like it might be out, just so you know, um, so Ben cannot hear us. You can't hear us, Ben? Nope. Okay. Very, let's start it. Um. Talking again. Hey, Ben, can you hear us now? Yeah. Okay, can you call? Can we call him? I'm so sorry about the technical word. Okay. Um, anyway, the, the, the discussion was around whether we pivot to doing a community survey for our operational referendum, whether we. Continue to do both surveys uh or all the surveys. Um, so. I suggested that we have us like a meeting or have Perry or Bear come in to talk to us just about what operational referendum. Process or planning looks like and getting us all up to speed on that, because we do know our operational referendum drops off. We do know that, you know, regardless of, of our budget situation, we would be looking at doing that and we're like looking at speeding up our time. Right? So that means we need to make some decisions. So I thought it'd be good if we're all on the same page about. What that looks like, so um, I think that would be a future agenda topic. That way, and I just kind of wanted to go, I want to review, let me make sure that makes sense.
Total simple.
Okay.
There are some timelines. Um, Perry talked about if you do an operational referendum survey, he'd want to get that out by March, by spring break. Which means if you back that up to postcards, reviewing certain questions, which is the other reason I brought it up to Danielle, because she wanted the decision. Relatively soon, it wouldn't be a decision that you're going to referendum, but just that you'll want to gather that information from the community. To make those decisions, and then also Bear talking about some of those loan or short-term possible options. And we talk about cash bonus here, so getting everybody in the room seemed like a good plan to start reminding ourselves of those timelines and.
Right.
You're not next to.
I guess my other thought, though, or might be uh. Who would do our operational referendum survey? Because that's not, we're not, are we contracted with Donovan or?
One of the, one of the reasons that we thought Eric could do it is first he has experience, so he sent me three or four samples and I could share with the group, you could just look at questions, figure out how you want that to look. And the other piece was really just trying to eliminate some of our spending by taking um the five thousand we would have spent on the other two surveys and instead spending that. On the operational survey so that it can wash.
So we could add that to our uh board meeting, as like the survey discussion, ask Perry to come, ask Bear to come, right?
Yep.
So that our next, right? But I'd also like to solicit maybe some other, I mean, sure, operational referendum is, is a big deal and I don't want to just fall back on. Whoever we use, because that's who we use. I want to make sure we're, you know.
Make sure Barry to find out that he's too.
Bear, well, I know school perceptions does them, they have a good, so, okay. So that's.
From the purpose of getting advice, I would like to have some uh discussion, not just about operational referenda. Uh, you know, and obviously this depends on information that comes in from uh Gus and Todd as well, but operational referenda. Uh, all the options basically that we may have from, from that to loans, uh addressing assets uh that.
Right.
We may have.
Right, so we could potentially, if in the next couple of weeks Gus and Todd are able to get more specific about some things, we could potentially have a, a more specific. Budget discussion, right? Or sooner. You're thinking of, I know. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we know all the options have been presented, we just don't know what would be recommended by Professor Todd. Yeah, what everything looks like. Okay, so that's good. So I think there's just sort of consensus that we're gonna get that on our next agenda. Yes. Um, the other thing we need to do is I would like to have a. Meeting just noticed for Friday in case we need it for a closed session. Meeting. A nineteen-eight-five, that's similar to what we've used in the past, and I wanted to see if there was a time on Friday that we could coordinate um the board for. Like a closed Zoom session. I, I date night, so it has to be before I leave on my date.
Wait, can we do four?
I could do four.
You mean just one?
I could just one.
Uh, A. Impulse myself.
Well, we have three, that's.
Yeah, and, and obviously if it needs to be caged, at four o'clock, it's gonna be fine.
Oh, okay, four. Okay, so can we get that noticed and posted? Okay.
Got it, what did you say?
First of all?
Uh, yeah, Zoom is, yeah.
Do you want the twenty-first any earlier or?
The twenty-first, it's thirty, right? What is the twenty-first? Our regular school board meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I guess it depends if we need a closed session. Let's just work on that agenda, because it may be longer.
Yep.
And then um. I don't know what you guys feel about this idea of doing some broader. Board guidance work around budget, if you want to have a discussion around that. If you want to have a discussion around that, I'd be happy to put together some ideas, since my head is lost in this, but. Only if people want to have that discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I started reviewing some of those articles a little bit this afternoon, and it seems like it would be a really intelligent approach to purposely construct.
Yep.
A path forward and.
Yeah, and define our role.
Define our role, clarify, so everybody understands, like, everybody understands.
Yeah.
Right.
It almost would be its own.
Session. So, yeah. It could, because then if we got to a place where we're like, had a cohesive idea of what, you know, why, we could actually maybe just knock out the. Right, like, you know.
So what if I make a personal goal to have some materials to you guys by the board meeting?
Okay.
And then we could schedule out a special work session or something.
Sure. Okay, yeah. So we'll make it like a, you wanted to kind of look at the reason. Or just materials, so not at the board meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
I mean, I could.
No plan.
I could just show you guys what I have. I could also give you everything I'm reading, because you want to spend eight hours reading. Books about budgets too.
Thank you, Chris.
I would suggest we just put an item on the next um agenda that includes scheduling a, a meeting to have that discussion.
Of Carly, give us the close notes.
Working on this.
C P C working. Okay. Okay, so we've got that, and then that seems to be, this might be the quickest we've ever had in history ever.
Wow, we're under an hour.
Um, no, because there's a board meeting debrief. Okay, um, yep, so board, board meeting debrief, uh. If there's anything you'd like to comment about what we've done well or what we did better, I felt about this meeting, I'd love to hear it. I'm waiting for some sass from it, I think. Yeah, that's my book then.
I think that uh Zoom is a little bit funky today.
Oh, yes.
And, and that's a challenge and, and uh maybe in the future. Uh, try to drive one a little so, uh sooner in the night.
Yeah.
But I was here whenever I was here and people were always trying to make it work, so, you know.
That's good feedback.
Sometimes. Sometimes, in cans and strings, just don't work that well.
That's good, that's actually good feedback, but also thank you, Taylor, because this is my first time doing it, and I know you had slides and like, we're all sent to. To really like, you know, have this visual when we meet, which I think will be really cool, so we'll get it figured out, so thank you.
Yeah, don't take that. You know, we're thrilled to have you.
Yeah.
I I appreciate your flexibility and uh Taylor getting this all set up, because uh. It, for me, I I know, yeah, I know there's technical difficulties, but this, it feels like I'm there, so uh. I appreciate that.
Does anybody have her number, like to just Angela McGuire? Does anybody have her?
She posted chat.
I don't think she can do anything except.
I'm very sorry, Angela, we'll see if we can, if you wanna text me, my number is four one four. Four nine one one zero nine four, and you can text me your question or comment, Angela. Um. Okay, I mean, I already, it's my scratch, yeah, Karen, yeah, go ahead.
I will not generally echo people's sentiments, I'll just nod and smile, but Taylor, I have been in your position where you are trying to problem solve in real time. It's rough, and you were amazing and graceful and impressive, so thank you so much. It will only get easier.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
Let's just sound like I was bowling on the new person.
No, you might, no, I know what you were saying, it's okay. Um.
I hope I do.
Anybody else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second adjourn, I'll have favor, moist vote. Thank you, everybody. Um, I can respond to that, uh, oh. Just the second.
The meeting was so short, you missed it, we're done.
No way.